Good morning. Welcome to Armenia County Commission Meeting for January 28, 2025. I'm going to call our meeting to order and note that we have a full quorum of Commissioners present today. Before we get started, just a reminder, don't be embarrassed to avoid your cellphone. And if you're going to be speaking today, please sign in in the back of the room by the door. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to our routine business, I believe we have a motion to amend our agenda.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed agenda by adding an item to regular business immediately before item nine to be titled, "Motion to Authorize the Chair to Sign an Application for Party Status, HP 24-001, in the Matter of Application by SCS Carbon Transport LLC for a Permit to Construct a Carbon Dioxide Transmission Pipeline."
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, we have an amended agenda, so I'm going to look for a motion to approve our agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Moving on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, bills to be paid, personnel actions, kind of the routine business of the county, I guess. Is anybody here that would like to speak to our consent agenda? All right. Any Commission member want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipley.
Aye.
Hi-Zee.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to regular business. First item is public hearing to consider a transfer retail on-sale liquor license from Our Four Nineteen Flags LLC. Kim Christensen, our deputy auditor, will brief us on this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. We have received, the Auditor's Office received an application for a transfer of a retail on-sale liquor license currently held by the Garrison Sports Club. The liquor license was sold from the Garrison Sports Clubs Club to Nineteen Flags. The business name for the new organization will be known as Mapleton Golf Course. Due to the sale of the license, a transfer is required. This license would allow for the sale of liquor to be consumed at their establishment located within rural Minnehaha County. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Office, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning Department, and no concerns were raised. The fee for liquor license transfer is $150, with the entire amount staying with the county for this type of license.
All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody that is a proponent of this action that would like to address the Commission, maybe the seller or the buyer, et cetera? Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm Danny Amundson, representing Nineteen Flags and Mapleton Golf Club. So we are the entity that entered into the contract to transfer the liquor license from the Garrison Sportsman's Club to Mapleton Golf Club. So we're on schedule to open the club in August of this year, and we'll be doing, you know, normal on-sale retail for beverages in our barn and restaurant. I do want to engage with the Commissioners a little bit this morning because it's been quite an interesting process in terms of obtaining a liquor license in the county. I've reviewed some of the state statutes, and I understand, you know, the quantity of licenses available based on population. My question for the committee is, who sets the prices as it pertains to the price of a liquor license in Minnehaha County?
Okay. Just, yeah, second. We'll get to that, Mr. Amundson. Okay. Anything else for the Commission?
I might have some follow-up based on the answer to that question.
Is anybody from, able to address that? I know the number of licenses are set by statute, and I think the county commission sets the price, and then the market controls the price.
Yep. The county does set the fees for, it's based on the location near, the nearest municipality. So as it's with Sioux Falls, we have to charge a minimum of what the city of Sioux Falls is charging. And same thing with Brandon. If it's near one of the second or third-class cities, those are set by the state.
And that's all statutory?
Yes.
Okay, so the state tells us what we have to charge, and what we charge is based on the location.
Okay. That's helpful to know. So, you know, our situation was fairly interesting. We started our project back in 2023. At the time we started, we were not within the state statute rights in terms of 12 months from having an open facility. At the time, there was one available liquor license in the county. We kept track, and Kim did a great job. I kept track because we obviously, our business hinged on being able to apply for and obtain that last available liquor license in the county. When we came last year within our kind of 12-month timeframe, I came and submitted our application, and lo and behold, in the same two-week period, another entity from not next to Sioux Falls also applied for the one remaining license. So had two options, come and compete for one license, at which the county would be looking at two, you know, businesses that were probably both within the rights of obtaining the license, and one of them would have been writing a check for $1,250, and the same other business in the county would have been writing a check for $242,500 to the county. I couldn't risk the livelihood of our business hinging on that. So I obtained, you know, the list of the other 11 liquor license holders in the county, met with various groups, and I was able, fortunate enough, to engage in a private transaction with the Garrison Sportsman's Club that we effectuated. So in the end, I know the county isn't in business to make a profit, but y'all obtained a check for $1,250 from a rural local business, and a good upstanding business in our county also got a check for, as you can imagine, a lot more money. So the process from, you know, we would have sat here and competed. Had you selected the other business, one of the outcomes is the guy looks me in the face and says, "How much do you want to pay for it?" And I just don't find that that's right, considering we are two, you know, equal-standing businesses on the county of Minnehaha. So just some commentary and feedback. I understand the state statute drives a lot of this, but it was very interesting and kind of from a consumer standpoint unfair kind of process for businesses in the county.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents of granting this liquor license? Any opponents to the county transferring this liquor license? Okay, I'll turn it over then to the Commission for questions and/or action.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I do have a quick question, Kim. They have 12 months to start business once the license is transferred to them, correct? So I'm imagining that, Mr. Amundson, you're within a year of opening and using? Okay. He's nodding in the affirmative. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Hi-Zee.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our agenda, Lutheran Social Services Family Violence Project Presentation. Good morning, ladies.
So, good morning. I'm Stacy Johnson. I'm the Vice President of Program Operations with LSS, and I'm joined by Rachel Shepherd, our Director of Behavioral Health, and Allison Pratt, our Associate Director of Reentry Services. We're excited to be here this morning and share about some of the work that we're doing at LSS. Our Family Violence Project works with individuals who have domestic violence and abuse in their relationships. And really, this work focuses on assessment, abusive partner intervention groups, and case management services. The goal is to help people to make different choices so that there is less violence in their relationships, finding alternatives to using power and control, and creating emotional safety and physical safety. The vision at LSS is that all families, all people in South Dakota are healthy, safe, and accepted, and that this is part of that mission. Moving on to the next slide. So in fiscal year 2024, we completed 174 assessments, and I think Allison would attest to, if we had more staffing, we would complete many more assessments. There's often a waitlist to complete those assessments. That assessment helps to drive the courts in making a decision about what happens next. And then we have 130 groups that were completed in fiscal year or calendar year of 2024, and 174 individuals in case management services. And you'll notice that the case management and the individualized assessments match. It's because every individual is eligible for case management services, including follow-up and making sure that all of their other needs are met, because we understand that domestic violence doesn't happen in a vacuum. And so there are always, often, a lot of other factors, and so if we can eliminate some of those other barriers, individuals are likely to be more successful. Next slide. So currently, as it stands right now, and unless this is changed, and Allison would have to update on that, we have 10 total groups running, including one Spanish-speaking group. We have 110 individuals enrolled in those groups in the Sioux Falls area, and we currently have 55 on a waitlist. We just recently hired another group facilitator, and so hopefully that waitlist will start to drop down. But we see that there is a very large need, and without the support of the Commission, that waitlist would undoubtedly be much higher. Next slide. So just some data and some outcomes that we see. If someone is ordered for assessment in quarter one and quarter two, you can see that 83% to 85% of people then called to schedule that assessment. There's some self-determination in that. They have to make a choice if they want to follow through with the orders that the court has made. 70% of those 85 then completed the assessment, and then between 58% and 62% then enrolled in what recommended intervention. And those that enter group, about 66%, or not about, 66% of them completed the group. And so that's well over half of them completing the group, and we know that domestic violence is pervasive and often has a long history. And so we see a lot of success in people making positive steps forward. Next slide. There's a lot of accountability in this process, and so we make sure that clients are following through with the orders. We do a lot of follow-up. We track arrests, records moving past the assessment and group completion as well. Part of our process is monitoring and required, individuals that are required to get assessed and making sure that they follow through. And you see the numbers that 85% are calling, and then the 70%. Next slide. Accessibility. We understand that it can be difficult with transportation and other things to get to groups, so we offer Zoom interventions, so group can be attended remotely. We have onsite interventions. We also have them from, throughout the day and into the evening, to make sure that there is an availability for people to get assessment within the schedule that works for them, but also maintain employment and their other obligations in their life. Questions that you may have for us?
Before we go to questions, we always take public comment first. So is there anybody from the public that would like to address this Commission about this agenda item? All right. Questions from the Commission? I guess I have a couple. Are pretty much all of your clients court-ordered? Or is there some that come to you saying, "We have an issue and I need help"?
So the majority are court-ordered. If just an individual in the community said, "Hey, I have an issue with domestic violence. Can you help me?" And so we usually give them an option. We say, "You can do an assessment, and we can determine if maybe group is appropriate." But with our assessment and the validation tool we need, we do need a police report for that. And so if they don't have any criminal charges in regards to domestic violence, the assessment doesn't really play a part in their situation, because we don't have all the required documents. So then we do talk to them about the group and saying, "You can just enroll in the group," and we can do that. So we kind of do a basic screening. What are your concerns with domestic violence? Why do you think you need a program? And if we feel that they're appropriate, then we just put them in our group.
Okay. And you're Allison?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, yes.
No, that's fine.
I just want to add to that quick. There's also a referral process for those people that are wanting help. So we have our outpatient program also for individual therapy that we can get them into if they are looking for help within their family or themselves. We can do that also.
Stacy, I heard you comment about you track arrest records and that type of thing. So, you know, somebody goes through the program, and two or three years later, do you know if there's been another incident? Is that what you're tracking for? Or can you elaborate on that?
Up to 18 months. Two years. We track up to two years.
Two years.
So six, 12, 18, and 24 months. We're pulling those records.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to a presentation on the Southeastern Council of Governments programs. Good morning, Lynn and team.
Morning, Commissioner. I am a little under the weather, so I have my team with me today. I'm going to do a minimal amount of talking. I'll turn it over to Eric Barnes and Sophie Johnson to kind of lead you through this. I feel like this might be a little bit of speed dating. Are we running this here ourselves? Sophie, you want to do that for me? So I'm the executive, or the President and CEO of the Southeastern Council of Governments. I think you can hit it just on the side there. We're one of six planning and development districts in the state of South Dakota. We've been around formerly since 1972. We are comprised of six counties, of which you are a member, and 40 municipalities. Membership in CCOG is voluntary. We don't have any taxing authority. Revenues for 2024 were about $4.5 million. About half of that comes from administering the Southeastern Development Foundation, which does, is a regional revolving loan fund, and also operates Affordable Housing and Dakota Business Finance, which does SBA 504 lending. You can see our membership hovers kind of around that 8% to 10% dues cover overall budget. In 2024, our dues accounted for about $357,000. A majority of that came from our first-class municipalities, followed by our counties, and then our second and third-class municipalities, which actually use our services the most. I'm going to turn this over to Sophie to talk about this with her team.
Hi, thank you. So my team is comprised of grant and loan staff, and we help communities in our six-county area apply for infrastructure projects. We also do some quality-of-life grant and loan applications, like Parks and Rec, Department of Transportation, streets, sidewalks, those types of things.
And if I missed it, could you introduce yourself one more time?
Sure. Sophie Johnson. I'm the Community Development Manager at CCOG.
Thank you.
So in 2024, we actually had a really good year. I think it was our fourth highest-grossing year to date as far as grants and loans awarded for our communities. It was a little shy of $150 million. And how that turns out for your return on investment averaged amongst all our members was about $416 for every $1 that you spent with our organization. So how that turned out for Minnehaha County, you guys were the biggest winner, and this is generally the case because you have the largest population, but you also pay the most dues. So this is the breakdown. You can see, last year, you paid about, a little more than, a little less, excuse me, than $27,000, but then about $110 million in grants and loans awarded, which is a return on investment of over $4,000. Something, two other planners in our office, they do land use planning, and so they help communities in Minnehaha County and all of our other communities with comprehensive plans. Zoning ordinances, municipal ordinances, we're just sort of technical assistants for them, or for their staff. We also, our organization runs the Sioux Falls MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The governing body is the Urbanized Development Commission, and we help all the communities in the MPO coordinate with their transportation plans. And part of this is actually reimbursement to your planning staff. So you can see, these are the dollars that flowed through our organization to Minnehaha County and all the other MPO communities.
All righty. So my name's Eric Barnes. I'm the senior lender over at the Southeastern Development Foundation. So the Southeastern Development Foundation was created in 2002 to provide financing to new and expanding businesses. Not that there's not enough banks in town, but sometimes there are projects that are needed throughout the communities we serve that are too risk-heavy for our banking partners to lend on. So we're really gap financing, trying to stimulate economic activity. Throughout our years, we've since, or through year-end 2024, we have lent out a total of almost $55 million, leveraging $308 million for a total economic impact of $363 million. SCDF contracts with CCOG for our staff time. So as you can see, we provide lending to six counties there in the southeast corner of South Dakota. Our SCDF loans in 2024, we approved 25 economic development loans for a total just shy of $5 million. We leveraged $35 million through us, our banking partners, and the down payment requirements for a total economic impact of $40.47 million. We created or retained 88 and 1/2 jobs throughout those 25 loans. Some of the loans we did here in town were Crestman Sanitation for a garbage truck, Castle Del Ray we helped with, 605 Creative. And then the other thing we do is Affordable Housing, which I'll kind of let Lynn take over here.
Take that for you. So we sell the governor's house, which is constructed in Springfield by prisoners. So we do that on behalf of South Dakota housing, but we also develop ourselves. We have our own construction crew of six contractors that actually report to me as well. So we also develop them as well. The governor's house was created by Governor Jankel in the early 90s, and it's still a really good option for affordable housing. We placed 10 of these in Sioux Falls last year and sold eight of those and have the last two that were under construction right now. The home buyer needs to buy the lot and the building permit, the foundation, and all that. So SCDF actually, in this scenario, does that, and we kind of sell it then as turnkey. I'll give you an example. Pricing kind of was all over the board last year a little bit, because it depends on your lot cost. We are restricted to be making no more than a 10% profit off of these, so that varied a little bit as well. But these, in this instance, this was our most expensive house. It was $280,000. We sold one over on 423 South Chicago. It's 1,200 square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath. But how that works is we also get some Housing Opportunity Fund dollars for this. That's forgivable over five years at 20% per year. So if you actually deduct that amount, their mortgage was about $266 plus closing cost. They do need to be 80% or less median household income in order to qualify for this. This just gives you some pictures of the inside. We did some virtual staging on these as well, to give you a sense of how the house kind of lays out. And this is one that we put, this was a vacant lot on 911 South Tents, so there would have been, you would have been only collecting taxes on that vacant lot all these years, and so we put a house there and sold that. We also do what's called recycled homes. These are homes that are donated to us either by public entities or private individuals. This is a house the city of Sioux Falls acquired. It was in a storm drainage area that they wanted moved out of there. Typically, they would have torn this down. Instead, they gave it to us. We picked it up and relocated, and actually a veteran bought this house after we relocated it. This was a fun house to do. This house was located over by Valley Springs. It was, we call it the barn house. A couple had it on an acreage, and they had some sort of a spring in the basement that started to create some issues, and it started to sink. And so they decided to build a new house. They donated it to us, and we actually moved it to a lot in Renner. It was the 100th house that we had actually developed and sold, so that was kind of fun, too. Here's a couple other examples. Both of these, interestingly enough, were given to us by private individuals on land that they just wanted to redevelop, and we've moved those. The bottom one on the right is under contract right now. And then also, sometimes we buy what I call the ugliest house in the neighborhood. This definitely was, and rehabilitated it, sold this house for $225,000 to someone that was income-qualified as well. Overall, we've had 117 houses we've developed and sold for over $25 million. If you look at taxes and assume that maybe 2% of that is what goes on the tax rolls, that would account for about a half a million dollars per year that has been added to the tax rolls through those efforts. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Eric.
The other organization we run is Dakota Business Finance. What we do there is we facilitate the Small Business Administration's 504 Loan Program. So what, Dakota Business Finance was approved by the SBA back in 2006 to administer their SBA 504 Loan Program. What that is, is what we call fixed asset financing. So long-term real estate, buildings, leasehold improvements, equipment, DBF, Dakota Business Finance, contracts with CCOG for our staff time. Our territory is a little bit different than SCDF or CCOG's territory. We cover the states of South Dakota, Minnesota, and Iowa. The typical structure of this is the borrower or the small business owner provides 10% down payment, so lower down payment. The SBA will come in and sell bonds for their 40%, and then the bank will also lend 50% on the deal. 504 loans approved in South Dakota in 2024. There were a total of 72 loans. We did 37 of them. There was $57 million worth of loans originated within the state. Here's just a little graph of the lending that happened. During COVID, our rates were really good. They were at 2% for about 25 years. So obviously, we had an influx '20, '21, and '22 for our SBA 504 Loan Program. Here's just a graph on the volume. We did roughly $32 million worth of SBA 504 lending in 2024. Our year in review, over all of our states, we did 51 loans for $37 million. We leveraged 60, just shy of 64 million for a total economic impact of $100 million. We created or retained 369 jobs. Also, we worked with 22 different lending partners. We were recognized as the number-one CDC in the state of South Dakota for both dollar and volume. We were also awarded number-two in Iowa for total number of loans done. So we did 37 in the state for just shy of 32 million. Here are just some projects we worked on. So Castle Del Ray, Vibrant Mines, which was the old Apple Tree Building down there south of the mall, Blue Haven in the atrium, and then also Preform Solutions up there. That's all we had for you folks. Would you take any questions?
All right. Anybody here for public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, comments? Commissioner Benega?
Just a quick question. Do you have any people on a waiting list for the governor's houses by chance?
We don't currently, right now. I love to get them if we can beforehand, because a lot of times, like, when housing market was better, we would have a waiting list and a lot of times, and we would just pass off the Realtor savings. They wouldn't, because we are capped at 10%. So we're always collecting names on those. They're a really good option for the Grants for Grad. Right now, it's really good with first-time home buyers that are coming out of school. Get a lot of people that are retired, that maybe they've never owned a home before, a lot of single parents, some people that are coming out of a divorce. So it's just a really good option for people if we can get them into that home.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll just chime in as the liaison to CCOG and a board member. I appreciate all that you do. It's quite a presentation. Do you guys need some more projects to stay busier? It's just, you guys always got something going across multiple organizations here. And as to CCOG specifically, we appreciate all you do. I think we take pride, you know, having professional planning staff. I see Scott. But I think where you guys add the most value is to those smaller communities that just don't have the resources to have professional staff. So when I'm in those CCOG meetings, I can tell everybody's engaged and on board and glad to contribute with that type of return on investment. But I think some of your areas see the most value for those smaller communities, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good team. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Moving on. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign an application for party status, HP 24-001, in the matter of the application by the SCS Carbon Transport LLC for a permit to construct a carbon dioxide transmission pipeline. And we have Mr. Bog, our Chief Civil Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Boggs, this is Attorney's Office. Appreciate the deference getting this on the agenda today. It is unfortunately a bit of an urgent matter. Just a little history. We received an email yesterday from the county's former outside counsel, Alex Hagan, that received and turned an email from the PUC staff inquiring about the county's intention to file for party status and indicating some question as to whether Summit Pipeline had already filed a motion or intended or had given intention of asking the PUC to preempt the county's ordinance. Given that uncertainty, our prior advice had been to wait, as we had done in Navigator, to receive that actual motion for preemption. wait, as we had done in Navigator, to receive that actual motion for preemption. In light of the staff's reach out, it is our advice now to seek party status at this time. We will be a few days past the deadline, but given the indications from PUC staff, we anticipate a favorable response. No guarantee from the commissioners, but that is what we're asking for, is that you grant authorization to, to go ahead and file for party status on that pipeline issue pending before the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay. Before we go to commission questions or action, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Anybody want to address the commission on this agenda item? All right. So this is a kind of a rapidly developing situation, and that's why we're here today, adding it to our agenda last minute. I'll turn it to the commission for questions and/or comments, action.
Having been through this multiple times now, and unfortunately, the information that we got originally has changed, which is disappointing at this last minute because of the fact that frankly, what we were told by one of the partners and now what they're actually doing is different. So I'm disappointed, but I think we need to move forward with it.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Benega's comments. My position has always been our action through our ordinance regarding setbacks, et cetera, speaks loudly and for itself. But according to this latest development, that is going to be most likely challenged or can be challenged. And by taking party status, it allows us to defend our action as a commission body unless I'm misspeaking, and I'll look to our civil attorney for that.
Yeah. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benega, I appreciate the comments. Just for clarification, the intention would be, as we did with the Navigator Pipeline, is the party status or intervention will solely be to, for the intention of resisting the intention of the pipeline company respective former and current attempts to have the PUC supersede or preempt our ordinance. So as you've already expressed, I believe that the county has expressed its legislative will through the adoption of the ordinance and amendment of our planning ordinance as to the planning preferences of routing a pipeline of this nature through Minniac County. So it's not our intention to be actively involved in all aspects of the pipeline, but only to the extent of resisting that attempt to supersede or preempt our ordinance and, and ask them to follow that ordinance as previously adopted by this body.
Okay. So Eric, if you stick around, I think we're probably going to go to a vote unless we have additional comments.
Mr. Chair, one additional comment. You know, the pardon my voice and battling a cough, like many of us are. It's no secret how I'll be voting on this item. I addressed this issue in detail during last week's meeting, and I'm pleased that it's come before us today for a formal vote. I'm encouraged that the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission supports my stance and that reason has prevailed in bringing this matter to our attention. Once again, in addition to the counties that applied for party status since our last meeting, those would be Lincoln Minor, Kingsbury Counties. They have all submitted applications for party status. And in my view, it's simply common sense and the right decision for Minniac County to join the 10 other counties along the pipeline route that have applied for party status for all the reasons that have been stated here today and last week. Thank you.
I'd look for a motion or additional comments.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Motion to second. Additional comments? I guess the only question I would have would be from Eric is when would we expect a, when could we reasonably expect a reply from the PUC regarding acceptance of our party status application?
Mr. Chair, excuse me for leaving the podium slightly too early. That's a very good question, and I don't have a definitive answer. I would indicate to you that they are meeting today. However, the agenda for that meeting is already set. I don't believe anything, even if they receive it today, and I will electronically transmit that once it's signed, will be added to today's agenda. As Commissioner Heisey's already indicated, many of those additional counties are actually on the agenda with pending party status applications, along with countless tens of other individuals or other organizations are also on that same list as not having been acted on. So whether they'll have any kind of emergency action or just simply address this at their next regular meeting would be my prediction, but I don't anticipate an earlier emergency-type meeting from the PUC to address this. So we'll just wait for whenever they take action on it. I would tell you, historically speaking, on the Navigator Application for Intervention, they did the same thing when we applied. They addressed it at their next meeting and then granted that application. So it would be our hope or anticipation they will similarly grant this one as well.
And would we need legal counsel at that meeting when they do that?
Mr. Chair, I believe, as we did with the Navigator and Summit prior applications, we will give notice to our carrier that we have received indication that our ordinances are being challenged. We'll then leave that up to SDPAA and Claims Associate as to whether or not this is a coverable event. And then once they determine that, they'll assign outside counsel. Would simply be my recommendation that we retain the same firm, given the history and the fact that they already have all that paperwork ready to go from the prior round. It would seem foolish to recreate that wheel with some other firm. Not that there aren't capable attorneys otherwise in town to handle that. But I did anticipation, reached out to them and, and found that they are ready and willing to so take that on. But we'll have to wait for the carrier and Claims Associate to make that official.
Okay. Because I believe the last time this was tens of thousands of dollars in defense costs that were spent either through our insurance or through the county itself.
And I'll defer a little bit to Tom on this, but my recollection is that above and beyond the coverage from our, our carrier, we out of pocket spent approximately another $25,000 or $26,000 in, in addition to that coverage. So I don't know the exact total, but somewhere in that $50,000 range, I believe, is what ultimately was paid to outside counsel.
So this action doesn't come without a cost. Okay. Thank you very much, Eric. Additional comments or questions? All right. I believe this requires a roll call vote.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize chair to sign a contract with Guardian RFID for inmate tracking system. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Grabett, Director of the Judicial Detention Center. What I have before you this morning is a contract for a youth tracking system within our new facility. We first saw this system when we were doing tours to, and planning for our, our new building. We saw it down in Jasper County, Missouri. We were very impressed with the modern technology and the report ability, ability of this system. Shortly after we returned, I was invited to a demo at our own jail. And afterwards, our jail put this system in, in the jail to use as well. We think it's going to be a great system for us to use, and I'm asking for your approval to purchase this as a, an owner, owner cost in the new facility.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Turn it to the commission. Questions, action?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, can you just describe how it works in the basics?
Sure. Each, each youth will have an ID that has a code on it. And then there's different little square blocks throughout the facility that we can use to track them going into a certain classroom. It's also how we do our safety checks while they're in their cells. And then we can keep track of refused meals, medication dispersments, all kinds of different things that we can keep track of that happen with each individual inmate throughout the day. So we basically know where they're at throughout the whole building at all times with the, there's little, it looks like a cell phone. It's a little cell phone that our staff would have to, to keep track of all those different activities. And then we can run reports off of that. If we would have like a youth saying that we're not feeding them or something like that, we can run a report showing that the meal was delivered at this time on this date, those types of things.
And Mr. Chair, just one follow-up. And I take it these are creative youth, though, that can work around different systems. And so I guess the general rule is that they have to carry this badge with them at all times. But did you learn something from that facility in Missouri? How, how kids get around it or purposely leave it somewhere else in the facility or any hijinks that come from it?
They didn't really go into that much detail. I've had some conversations with our jails. My concern was the ID itself, how, how expensive they are and, you know, if they lose them, what happens, those types of things. And the bigger concern was can they use it to harm themselves in any way? And I've been assured that it, it's not as big a problem as I thought it might be.
So Jamie, you've mentioned that internal only, so not, not, nothing outside the building. What do you mean when you say this is an owner cost?
There's certain costs that in the project that we had planned for that would be paid for by the county. So it's an owner cost. This isn't something that would be part of the bond financing for the new facility.
Is it an expense that's dispersed or shared with other counties that have?
It, it's an expense that will be factored in when we set our daily rate, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, morning, Jamie. It says that the, the total cost is a little over $33,000 this year. Do you foresee that changing next year or down the road?
There is a yearly cost that follows. It'll be about, right at $20,000 a year after that.
Thank you.
Commission, no further questions? If there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Authorize chair to sign the 2025 jail housing per diem contracts with Clay County, Hutchinson County, Geral County, Lake County, McCook County, Moody County, and Turner County. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Mattson, Warden in the Minniac County Jail. Before your housing contracts, per diem contracts for the counties that were listed, this is kind of routine business for us. New year, new contract. Just solidifies what the daily bed rate is and all the legal language of who's responsible for what, for those outside counties.
Public comment on this agenda item? Warden is, what's the difference between this year's rate and last year's rate?
It's the same. Well, we were at $112 a day for 2024 and we're $112 for 2025. We'll be redo, recalculating the daily bed rate. I'll be working with Susan Beaman to do that exercise on the, the federal formula that's used. And I'll be negotiating a new US Marshal contract later in 2025. The minimum they do is a three-year contract. They won't do yearly. So when we have historically looked at our housing rate, I, I don't think it's fair that we charge our neighboring counties more than what we would charge the US Marshals. So we try to keep it the same.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to purchase three 2024 Ford Escape vehicles from Sioux Falls Ford, not 2025's?
Correct. Captain Josh Phelps here with Minniac County. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time. We're looking to authorize, get authorization to purchase three 2024 Ford Escapes. In '24, just recently, we had a, a vehicle that was salvaged, and so insurance paid that out. We have a small amount of operation funds from '24 that we carried over. And then we are allocated through the budget process for a vehicle in 2025. We have sought out and evaluated those vehicle options that meet our needs and the county's procurement policy. Sioux Falls Ford has offered to sell us three 2024 Model Ford Escapes. These vehicles are brand new, come with factory warranties and are all-wheel-drive. The Ford Escape is not available through the South Dakota State bid. However, it is available through the Iowa State bid. And our purchase price through Sioux Falls Ford is significantly lower than the Iowa State bid. The options provided by Sioux Falls Ford meet or exceed the Iowa State bid vehicles. We're looking to take possession of two of those vehicles here in the near future and one subsequently later on. We're excited for the opportunity to purchase these vehicles from a local dealer within Minniac County and grateful for Sioux Falls Ford for offering us at these such great prices that are much lower than the existing competitive bid. And available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Captain. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And then a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider abatement recommendation for denial parcel 52870 for 2024 property taxes in the amount of $1,370.82. Good morning, Director Lilla.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lilla, Director of Equalization. This abatement's pretty straightforward. We had an abatement request filled out. When, when the purchasing party purchased that property, that's pretty standard because there's property taxes coming that as an exempt entity purchases. We generally have those abatement requests. This one was filled out a little preemptively because we got them approved for '24, paid '25, but we also had the form filled out to abate. So the net result is there was no property taxes because they were coded as exempt. But we do have the application in hand, so we have to process that. The only taxes remaining are not property taxes. They're special assessments, which are not abatable. So we're requesting denial of this actual abatement application.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Just for clarity's sake, Chris, I mean, taxes go to, you know, the general funds of the schools, the county, the municipalities. But when it comes to stuff like drainage fees and that type of things, those are what benefit the property. And those are the things that we're talking about here that cannot be abated.
Correct. These are not property taxes. They're not part of the county levy, the school levy, or the city levy. These are special assessments put on after the fact by the city of Sioux Falls for drainage fee and, and road maintenance. Those are basically tacked on bills to the taxes to make sure that those are getting paid through that process. That way, if somebody neglects to pay them, then there can be liens placed on the property through the tax deed process.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And that's what we, that's what these are, is all special assessments, which every exempt entity, we get those questions all the time. You know, a church will buy a property and become a church. And then a year later, you know, they file their exemption and a year later, they are exempt. And then they call us and say, why do I have this $900 bill? I'm exempt. Well, it's special assessments.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. All right. Call the roll, please.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adopt proposed changes to the Power Outage Response Protocol. Good morning, Meredith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office. So at the last meeting, we brought forward the Power Outage Response Protocol proposed changes for its first review by the Commission. So just as a refresher, the new policy, it shortens it a little bit because it cut out some outdated and repetitive language. And we, in the packet, we did include the new copy as well as the current instead of a red line because it was completely rewritten. So I am before you today to encourage you to adopt the proposed changes to the policy.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, legislative update.
Hello again, Commissioners. Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office.
Hello again, Commissioners. Meredith Jarko with the Commission Office. So for today's legislative update, today is legislative day 10. Couple of important dates to note. Coming up here, on Thursday is the last day for unlimited bill and resolution introduction. And then next week, on Wednesday and Thursday, are the last days for introduction of individual bills and resolutions and committee bills and resolutions. So we are starting to hit some of those milestones in the session. I believe February 25th is crossover day. So a lot more activity this past week than the first week of session, even specifically yesterday. There are a lot of updates that happened, which, there were some bills introduced that aren't necessarily reflective in the packet since it's, since it is current as of noon on Friday. But there are 239 bills that have currently been filed. A couple of them that we were tracking have already been tabled or deferred to the 41st day. And some that we have been tracking have started to make some progress and have passed through the Senate or through the House and will then go to the next chamber. So a couple of the ones that I wanted to note, House Bill 1050 was referred to House taxation. That is to authorize municipalities to impose a new tax to fund capital improvement projects. Just wanted to highlight that because even though the municipality is imposing the tax, the bill does state that the municipality may transfer ownership of the capital project that it uses the tax for to build. It can transfer ownership to the county or the school district if the building partially resides in that area. So again, it's not a tax that we would be able to impose, but could see opportunities with the City of Sioux Falls to grant us ownership of capital improvement projects. House Bill 1052 yesterday was on the House floor for quite a while. That is to prohibit the exercise of eminent domain for a pipeline that carries carbon, carbon oxide. That did pass the House. So just with all of the pipeline conversations going on, to keep in mind that, as you can see in the description there, is very short and sweet, notwithstanding the provisions of any other law, a person may not exercise the right of eminent domain to acquire right of way for, construct, or operate a pipeline for the preponderant purpose of transporting carbon oxide. So, you know, there is some overlap with this application coming in from Summit and what's going on in the legislature. So we're just keeping an eye on that, especially as we apply for party status. House Bill 1059, clarify the meaning of teleconference for purposes of open meeting requirements. That did pass through the House. So that would just clarify that an official meeting still could occur over tele, teleconference or different means like that. But if we are, if you're communicating solely to schedule a meeting or confirm attendance availability for a future meeting, that would not count as a public meeting because it's solely just an admin-type task to ensure that we can meet and no policy or anything county business-related is being discussed. The Senate Bill 37, that did, that is to revise and repeal provisions related to the 911 emergency surcharge and the 911 Coordination Board. So this would change some of the reporting dates for the 911 surcharge, as well as repeal the expiration date on the increased surcharge. So this would, currently, the surcharge is set, the $2 surcharge is set to sunset in July of '26. This bill would repeal that. That did pass in the Senate and has been referred to House Judiciary. So we're keeping an eye on that one. Senate Bill 19 was a very similar bill that has been tabled in favor of Senate Bill 37. There has been quite a few election bills that have been introduced, passed, tabled. One of the, the ones recently, Senate Bill 75, passed Senate State Affairs. That would require an indication of United States citizenship status on a motor vehicle operator's license or permit, just so that when individuals are voting and they provide that, their ID to vote, it is just a clear example, or, excuse me, a clear identification that they are a citizen, since in South Dakota they do allow for non-citizens to obtain identification cards. So just as a way to help those election workers when checking in voters or registering to vote, things like that. And there were a couple that were introduced later on Friday and even on Monday, many of which have not been scheduled for hearings. So again, a lot of election bills going on. We'll be tracking all of them as they start to move through different committees. There have been a few other in, as well as the teleconference for open meetings, there have been a couple of other county-specific bills, such as requiring the publication and review of the explanation of the open meeting laws of the state. That passed the Senate and was referred to the House Local Government. The AG would post open meeting requirements once a year, and then we would have to review that at the first meeting. As well as Senate Bill 84, we're tracking that. That is a bill supported by SDACC, which would extend the timeframe for filing a vacancy for the Board of County Commissioners. Instead of it being immediately, it would lengthen that to 35 days, or until the conclusion of the second regular meeting, whichever is later. That hasn't had a hearing, but we are tracking that. And then finally, there have been a couple of different property tax bills that have been introduced. House Bill 1019, which I know everyone's aware of, still has not been scheduled for a hearing. That would be increasing the sales tax and eliminating the school levies on owner occupied. But there has been Senate Bill 85, which is a property tax relief bill to certain senior owners of owner-occupied, single-family dwellings, as well as Senate Bill 101, which would provide a tax credit to limit the taxes due on property over the previous year. So if a tax bill is over 100, or exceeds 103% of the tax bill that the individual received the year prior, they would then get a tax credit. So that bill, which I believe was introduced either yesterday or Friday, yesterday, excuse me, that would kind of cap that tax increase to 3%, but it does exclude taxes from local decisions to exceed limits. So a lot of property tax bills that are starting to be introduced, none of which have hearings, but we're keeping an eye on all of them. I assume that they will all kind of get hearings around the same time as they kind of decide which ones to move forward with and which ones to table or defer. So I know that was a lot, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. Commission, questions on any of these bills, comments? Senate Bill 85, one of the last ones. Are there income guidelines on that one at all?
No. So the, the four guidelines would be that it is for residents who are at least 65 years of age, have owned their owner-occupied, single-family dwelling for 10 consecutive years, have been a South Dakota resident for 25 years, and have no other delinquent property taxes. So I did, I sent Chris Lilla, the Director of Equalization, a note when I saw this one kind of appear. And it, at this time, we are just kind of curious how those folks would be, how you would determine and kind of prove some of those things. There is a way to check, obviously, ownership of a single-family dwelling for 10 years. But then when it comes to, you know, ensuring that they've been residents for 25 years, whether it's checking voter rolls, or their license, or just kind of trying to figure out how individuals would prove that, per se, on their application if that were to, to pass. But there are no income requirements. Unsure how many citizens at this time, it, that's kind of a hard number for us to pull. We could pull the 10-year ownership, but then we would have to kind of cross-reference that with folks who've been residents for 25 years.
Would it be limited to a single property for an individual? I mean, if I had a home here in one of the Black Hills, could I do both, or would it just be limited to the?
Um, that is-
And if you don't know, that's fine, Meredith.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure. I, yeah, that's, that's a really good point that I will look into. It did just say owner-occupied, single-family dwelling. So, but that is a very good, good point to make that I'm sure will come up when it has a hearing. So.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, then. We have the opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda item. Anybody like to address the Commission on any non-agenda item? All right. Commission Liaison Reports. Commissioner Benega.
I attended a Fair Board meeting last week, I think it was, maybe the week before. And anyway, there was a discussion about the continuation of the Fair Board Agreement, Management Agreement, and the lease opportunities. And they also agreed, made some changes to bylaws which are being reviewed. But we should be hearing back from them shortly, I think. And it was a polite and comfortable conversation.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kipli.
We had planning and zoning. We had three meetings last night. So we had the joint meeting with Del Rapids. That one had a couple items related to light industrial zone property having outdoor storage and needing a conditional use permit. So that was a little bit controversial with some feedback from the community there that they didn't like the outdoor storage. It had many of the hallmarks of some of our public nuisance hearings, where basically just a lot of disabled vehicles just sitting around. But we got testimony that it was mostly getting cleaned up. So we gave them the conditional use permit with a, basically a six-month timeline that our staff will check back on it and make sure that they, they meet the conditions. So in theory, that could get appealed. That would be to the Joint Del Rapid City Council and this body. But then we had a joint meeting with the City of Sioux Falls, and then the county meeting, and nothing too notable to report in those. But got out of there in a little over a couple hours. So, and our former predecessor, Cindy Heiberg, had her first day on the Planning Commission. So that was the other notable feature. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Recently met with our county treasurer, Chris Swanson. We talked about a number of things. And one thing in particular, we'll probably have to address sometime down the road, and might give a number of you a phone call about it, is the implementation of a new technology and software that she'll be, her office will be implementing next month, about the middle of the month, I believe. And there might be some complications with that. Also had a CCOG meeting a couple weeks ago. Very exciting. Glad to see their presentation today. They do a lot of good work. Also met with Sean, who does quite a lot of work for that organization. So that's about it.
Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you, Chair. I had the opportunity to be at the Murder Mystery Dinner at the Pettigrew Museum last week. I think the event is sold out, but if not, it was very fun and interesting and just something different that the museum puts on. And so a big thank you to the staff that does the planning, and the volunteers, and the actors. And it was just another example of how I think our museum is very creative. And the, the ticket sales definitely help supplement the budget. So that's much appreciated. It was a, a great event. And I also was able to attend the, actually, I don't think the Murder Mystery Dinner is sold out. I think there are still tickets available. I'm sorry, it's not a dinner, Murder Mystery event. So this coming weekend, if you don't have plans, make time for that. I also had an opportunity to attend the Juvenile Justice Owner, Architect, Contractor Meeting. And those have been going on for the duration of the project, but it's been very interesting for me to learn about it from the perspective of someone newly involved. And just a shout out to all the parties involved and the work that's done to make sure we're creating an excellent facility and being good stewards of the money that we have been allotted for that project. So I'm looking forward to being part of that and continuing to learn what that looks like for the county.
If I put you on the spot a little bit, Commissioner, last Wednesday was the joint, or the elected officials' lunch. Were you at that? Anybody attend that last? Commissioner Benega?
I was there. It was a presentation by the Human Health and Human Services Group. And it was, well, Lieutenant Cole, I think, was also there.
Yeah, I was also there, yep.
Oh, sorry. There was quite a few people there, actually. I would guess 30. Anyway, it was well-attended. And the Health and Human Services Group did a great job of talking about the whole issue of homelessness and their need for housing and all that kind of thing that they're responsible for. So, sorry, I forgot, forgot about that one.
No, no, no problem. I just, you know, we're all moving in a lot of different directions. So I'm glad to hear that the both of you were able to attend it and that attendance was so good at 30. So it's a monthly meeting, and school board members, county commissioners, mayor, city councilors are all invited to it. So it's a public meeting. So, good to hear. All right. On the homelessness issue, last Thursday night at the Orpheum, I was on a forum on stage with the mayor, Cabinet Director Altaf from the governor's office, and from Sioux Falls Housing, Melissa, I'm sorry, blew a name away. I'm sorry about that. But I was expecting maybe 20 people at this forum, and there were 200 easily. It was a well-attended forum. We had a good hour discussing the issues of homelessness, primarily on the level of how do we interact with the city and the state and the providers? Because, you know, on a very limited basis, we don't build facilities to shelter homeless people. You know, a notable exception would probably be Safe Home that we run. But we really are the, the first and the last point of contact for most people that are involved in the plight of homelessness as far as needing those services. I'm the first in that we are the intake point. We are the ones, we, human services, Carrie Benz and her fantastic team, and a dozen or so people that, I think there's 14 actually, that specifically work with those issues, whether it be primarily keeping people from becoming homeless. And then if they unfortunately fall through the cracks, or end up in our community as homeless, where we are able to work with them. So it was a very interesting forum from a lot of different perspectives. I think it was appreciated by the several hundred people, a couple hundred people that were there. And the mayor had mentioned, you know, this was maybe just the first step. What's the next step? We need to keep the communication going, the collaboration moving forward. You know, we had the government level. Now do we go down to the service level? Do we talk to, you know, do we hear from the service providers? What are their issues? How can the communication flow both ways? So great conversation, lasted well over an hour last week. So I also had a Chamber Board of Directors meeting on Wednesday during the elected officials' meeting. So I was unable to attend that. Chamber Board is, maybe impacts the, us on the county level. The mayor was there. He talked a little bit about the sales tax revenues, and they are at like 1.7% increase. And they had budgeted for, I believe, 4%. And this is on top, so they're down, and this is down on top of the prior year. So they're really looking at some kind of austere budget times. The school district, Dr. Jane Stavum, don't know. I'm sorry?
May.
May. Okay, thank you. I looked to the wrong area. So, yeah, our Auditor's Office helped assist the school district on elections. Yeah. That must be it, if I can read my notes. Any other liaison reports? Moving on, then, to non-action commission discussion. Anybody have any non-action commission discussion? All right. We do not have an executive session, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.